Chairman Jackson, Chairman. To hear the meeting interpreted live in Spanish, please call 508-924-5155. Again, the number is 508-924-5155. Please focus your attention on the screen to hear the announcement in Spanish.
Hay una línea telefónica simultánea disponible para las personas que desean escuchar la reunión de la junta en español. Si desea escuchar la reunión en español, llame al 508-924-5115.
Thank you. For those of us unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and can be accessed on the PGCPAS YouTube channel for later viewing. Lastly, for recording purposes, the chairman reminds all board members to ensure that their microphones are turned on when speaking. Ms. Amy Olivio, please do the board prayer, please.
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Ms. Johnson, please call the robe.
Dr. Andeville, present. Ms. Boozer Strather, present. Mr. Briggs, present. Mrs. Brown, present. Ms. Goins McCants, present. Mr. Jongo. Dr. Moss, present. Ms. Olivero, present. Ms. Walker, present. Mr. Jackson, here. We have nine.
Thank you. Aquaman is present. If there is no objection to the May 8th, 2020, 2025, sorry, 2025 agenda, we will adopt it. Dr. Moss? From the consent agenda item?
Yeah, from the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'd like to pull two items from the general agenda, from the consent agenda and move it to general orders.
What items would those be?
I'd like to take 15.7 as well as 15.8.
So that was 15.1, say that again?
That's 15.7, which is approval of the new negotiated agreements and rapid financial assessment and improvement supports engagement. 15.7, 15.8.
Thank you. Can we please pull those to the general? Thank you. Are there, are there any more questions? Thank you. If there are no further objections, the May 20, May 8th, 2025 meeting agenda is adopted. Are there any corrections for the April 24th, 2025 board meeting minutes? There being no corrections, the meeting minutes are approved. News break. The chairman recognizes Superintendent House for the PGCPAS Spotlight.
Thank you, Chair Jackson, and good evening to everyone. Now, as we head into this, this final stretch of the 24, 25 school year, PGCPAS students are celebrating their bright futures. And so we'd like to share with you that just, just this past week, we, we had our third annual decision day, which was all about our prospective graduates and decisions that they made in reference to the journey that they have ahead. So I'd like for everybody to take a look at the screen so we can share some of what that day looked like.
So we bussed all of our seniors from all of our high schools here to the Bowie Bay Hawk Stadium to celebrate them and all their accomplishments. And really make sure that they have that next step, either queued up so they know what they're doing, whether it's the military, the world of work, or going to college, or if they don't know, supporting them in finding their next journey.
Rather than driving to be driving school decisions where we're showing, we're just showing our spirit. As seniors, we worked so hard to get to this point and we're just, we're just celebrating it today.
I mean, I'm really happy to be here to be able to celebrate my acceptance as a first gen student, first gen American. So being here is like a testament to everything that me and my family worked so hard to get to, to be the first person in my family to go to college.
KF University.
Morgan State.
Delaware State University.
Papa State University.
Vanville State University.
Morgan State University.
Virginia State.
Delaware State University.
This gives an opportunity for all the students that have been accepted at a college to come together, show out, mingle, let everybody know where they're going. And even if they haven't been accepted, they have the opportunity to apply for jobs and even apply at different colleges.
High school students think that college is the only answer. So we're here to spread the word that the military also provides a lot of benefits. And if college is not the way to go for them, or if they need a way to pay for college, that we're here to provide that opportunity to spread some awareness about what the US military does.
I am extremely proud of our students.
I'm incredibly proud of the class of 2025. We have done it all. We have done it all. We came back from COVID. We became leaders. Some of us became athletes, some of us became musicians, and we've just created so much love, so much hype in PGCPAS that we're just ready. We're ready.
This event reminds me every year why I came into education.
That was beautiful. I even heard one of those scholars, they were the first person in their family to go to college. That was, that was touching. Next, moving on to the community shout outs. The chairman recognizes board member Goin McCants.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Zakiya Goins McCants. I'm the proud representative of District 8. I am deeply honored to be here this evening to recognize a truly remarkable leader in our community. I have the privilege of presenting a certificate of recognition to someone whose work speaks volumes, not just through accolades, but through the daily impact she makes on students, staff, and families. Dr. Ryan Daniel, Principal of Fortford Elementary School, has been named National Distinguished Principal by the Maryland Association of Elementary School Principals and honor reserved for school leaders who demonstrate exemplary leadership, unwavering commitment to educational excellence, and a passion for equity and innovation. This is more than just a personal achievement. It's a reflection of the thriving community that she has built. Under her guidance, students are not only learning, they are growing, confident in who they are and what they can become. Teachers are empowered, families are engaged, and the standard for excellence is clear. Dr. Ryan, your leadership reminds us that being a principal is not just about managing a school. It's about inspiring a vision, building a culture, and putting children at the center of every decision. So on behalf of the Board of Education and our entire District 8 community, I proudly present this significant, certificate of recognition to honor your outstanding leadership and your well-deserved recognition. We are so proud of you and thank you for the legacy you are building every single day. And at this point, I invite Dr. Ryan Daniels to join us here at the front of the dais for a picture.
All right, moving on to 10.1. On behalf of the entire board, I extend my warmest congratulations to the class of 2025. Your resilience, dedication, and hard work have brought you to this significant milestone, and we are incredibly proud of your accomplishments. As you step into the next chapter of your journey, whether it's for the studies, careers, or personal pursuits, know that you carry with you not only the knowledge and experience gained here, but also the support, support and administration, um, excuse me, admiration of the entire community. We look forward to seeing your positive impact on the world. Thank you. The board informs the public of the following upcoming meetings. Please turn your attention to the screen for the list of meetings. Thank you. Please continue to check the board webpage for updates and more information. Now we're moving into public comment. The chair recognizes the registered speakers for the public comments. Registered speakers have three minutes to make their presentations and may not relinquish any part of their speaking time. The board will recognize your comments but not address them. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be muted and you may be removed from the meeting. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, board member, superintendent, principal, et cetera. We have 15 live public commenters tonight. Our first speaker is Ms. Shannon Reed, Individual Academic Achievement.
It reminded me of how much Black history matters. Black writers and thinkers can provide the mirror and moral vision needed to impact academic achievement here based on the way even non-Black writers and thinkers changed after deeply engaging with African-Americans. In a New York Times article about, about the book Reparations, A Christian Call for Repentance and Repair, co-author Gregory Thompson recounts how Dr. King's essays brought him to the realization that I'm a pastor in the longest-standing white supremacist social order in history. His subsequent reading of firsthand accounts of those who endured abuse profoundly changed the way he saw himself, the Christian church, and America. He changed the way he engaged with African-Americans after this. Eventually, he began to study reparations and wrote reparations where he frames racism as cultural theft, where the identity agency and prosperity of African-Americans are given to others. He explains that the most significant enduring forms of white supremacy are the theft of truth, power, and wealth. Is this familiar story being played out here by African-Americans against African-Americans and others? Does changing academic achievement require changing the way we see ourselves, PGCPAS, in America? Is the most recent acquittal of three Black officers after killing a young African-American man a reminder of the deep brokenness that must be addressed in broken systems? Maintaining deep reading as a basic standard shapes students' identity agency and wealth far more than the few stories we allow students to get away with reading. In a series of blogs called A People of Repair, Gregory Thompson describes how German pastor Dietrich Bonhoeffer found in the African-American church in Harlem in 1930, "A church centered not on the nation but the community, a church centered not on racial fantasy but on universal brotherhood, a church centered not on elites but on the suffering, a church centered not on the valorization of violence but on the practice of peace." Has PGCPAS traded in its rich inheritance of literary works and cultural institutions for baubles and trinkets like the Africans who sold their other Africans into slaveries? Do you hear how the endless work is robbing the teachers of life, liberty, and freedom in teachers' testimonies? The board has made some changes and it has the opportunity to work toward repair when it adds why the combined $61 million increase spent on executive-level administration and mid-level administration over the 24 and 25 budget cycles that produce few or negligible averages in ELA, MCAP scores were not used to train teachers. That money would have paid for 2,904 teachers to earn master's degrees as reading specialists at the university I attended in 2017. Just $1 million would have paid for the graduate studies of 47 reading specialists there. In 2017, classroom data alone revealed the need to become a reading specialist. I chose that university because they withheld your degree until you passed their test and the APACs exam for reading specialist. Their standards protect the institution. PGCPAS's lack of standards compromised this institution. Students are confused about the basic rules and rules of schools. Those pastors are not, they're not special. PGCPAS needs the same confrontation with truth that those pastors had.
Thank you so much. Timothy Meyer, President, Mount Rainier Elementary School.
Thank you all. Tonight is the 30th time I've spoken like this as president of Mount Rainier Elementary PTO and likely the last. After six years, it's time for the next generation of Mount Rainier Eagles to soar. I've always followed one basic rule. Never fight only for your school or your own child. Stand up for all of them. That's how this work began with Blueprint Schools Phase 1 and the Route 1 Schools Coalition. A problem for one school united all of us, and we were stronger together. I also learned that as parent leaders, success isn't getting our win. It's when PGCPAS wins. Being a PTO leader has been the most rewarding job I've ever had. But too many schools across District 3 and all across PGCPAS face huge challenges ahead. We must stand up for all of them, and each of you know I will not let PGCPAS lose this fight. Every success takes a team. So thank you to the best PTO board in the county for all you do to make our little PTO that could possible. To my District 3 partner, who set the model for parent advocacy back when you were a Mount Rainier PTO leader. It's an honor to keep following in your path. To our educators, our partners and school heroes every day. Nobody is going to fight harder for every Annapolis battle that you need won, especially on the issue of collaborative time. And to our students, you, our generation Maryland, making each of us PGCPAS proud. From visiting classrooms for Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day to working with students on issues like climate change, having the opportunity to work with you, I've seen so much talent and promise every day in our schools. And finally, to fellow parents across PGCPAS. Don't show up only when there's a problem. Speak up to thank PGCPAS for all that they do right. Don't come to board meetings because your school needs more funding. Join us in Annapolis because every school needs your voice. That's how we win, because being one PGCPAS is what makes us strongest. I know the question is, what's next? The truth is, whatever makes the biggest impact to fight for students and to serve PGCPAS, that's always been the focus. I promise this is not goodbye. This is, I'll be back soon again in some new role doing whatever PGCPAS needs most. And I'm personally grateful to and appreciative to every member of Team PGCPAS. Thank you all very much.
Pastor Jeffrey Mitchell.
Giving honor to the Chair of the Prince George's County Board of Education, to all of its members of the Board of Education. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come before you again. At the last meeting, I heard a young student who spoke so eloquently and had very valid points about not closing the charter school he attended. He mentioned how crowded the PG County Public Schools are. In the 20772 zip code area, there is not enough choice. However, there are choices for Royal Farms to be put within 10 minutes of each other. There are choices for McDonald's to be put five minutes from each other. There are choices for little convenience stores that sell liquor and wine during the day 24 hours. However, when it comes to educational part of District 9 and 20772, the thought is there is enough education. I believe there is not too much education, but there are not enough choice schools in 20772 zip code area in District 9. Placing a choice school in District 9 such as an Imagine School and the quality of their education that they offer will promote a successful educational outcome to this community. One of the builders in this area informed me that Prince George's, Prince George's County recently approved permits for over 150,000 single-family homes and townhomes for Route 4 in the Pennsylvania Avenue, Upper Marlboro area, the Westphalia area, which is also in the Upper, Upper Marlboro 20772 zip code area, is still adding townhomes, single-family homes daily. I believe there may have been cuts to education. Please do not let those cuts affect change. The Upper Marlboro community would benefit from a choice school in the District 9, 20772 area code. I understand budget cuts hurt us, but when it is for the children of today, for our future tomorrow, we are setting up the world to have better leaders and more innovative ideas to lead this nation. It all starts with our schools. Several members of Congress have publicly supported or attended charter schools. For example, Representative Julia Letlow has introduced legislation to make it easier to establish charter schools. Representative Juan Siskanami has also voiced support for the same legislation emphasizing the family. Ah, that's my time. Please, please reconsider. Please reconsider. It is valuable for our community. God bless.
Thank you, Pastor. Essence Hinder, Herndon.
Good evening. Food Service. Security. Healthcare Professionals. Central Garage. Central Office. Transportation. Paraprofessionals. School Clerical. And Maintenance. These are the nine chapters of Local 2250. We are also ESPs, and I consider us to be the heartbeat of this school system. We all play critical roles within this system to keep things going. We are currently in our bargaining season. I cannot say that things are going well right now. I will say this, though. There, there will be differing perspectives, and that is to be expected in any bargaining process. But on the level of reluctance to engage constructively is a key issue that has caused some discouraging energy. This resistance not only slows down the progress, but it also undermines the spirit of collaboration that is essential for reaching fair and sustainable outcomes. We hope to see a shift towards more open and solution-oriented dialogue as we continue forward. We're not asking for the sun, the moon, the stars, and the quasars, but we are asking for a fair bargaining practice.
Lisa Butler McDougall.
Good evening, Chairman Jackson, members of the Prince George's County Board. My name is Lisa Butler McDougall, and I'm the proud operator of Excel Academy Public Charter School. As one of the longest-running and only charter schools in the district that offers the IB framework, I've witnessed firsthand Excel's mission to provide quality choice in education through the four pillars of character development, college and career readiness, cultural arts, and community partnerships. I've also seen it work, the mission work on behalf of the life of Joseph, who left Excel and went to graduate from North Carolina A&amp;T State University, attained an academic scholarship and internship through a Disney program, and is now an Emmy Award-winning documentary team member at ABC World Studios in New York. I've seen it work through the life of Hannah, who went to Bethune-Cookman University and now works for Orlando Health while studying to become a physician's assistant. And I've seen it happen in the life of Gianni, who went to Morgan State University, then to the University of Pennsylvania for her masters, where she became the first social justice program scholar graduate and is now Public Policy and Legislation Senior Manager at Meals on Wheels America. There are many more, and we believe our current and future students deserve the opportunity that a legacy at Excel Academy provides. We understand the financial challenges the district is facing, the potential impact on all charter schools, and how Excel Academy is disproportionately affected because of low enrollment, enrollment numbers that were achieved not because of our school's ability, but because of actions beyond our control. Forced relocation during COVID, the interruption of registrations during an important enrollment season for all charters. And now our school has been placed under a cloud of doubt that has cost us at least 80 seats so far already while the budget is still under review. We've been budgeted for 463 scholars when this body approved us for 600 in 2022, and that is a number that we need to reach in order to be financially solvent. We appreciate the support that this board, the administration, who have worked on our behalf this school year, and we are requesting consideration be given to reducing the administrative fee back to 2% and to provide Excel with a budget allotment of 600 students, again, which is a number that we need to be financially solvent. While we are excited about Excel Academy's future and encourage you to give the school an opportunity to bounce back to what we know will continue to be a life-changing experience for our current families and for many more families to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stephanie Watson, Stutzstill.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendent, community leaders. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Dr. Stephanie Watson, and I stand before you today as a concerned parent, neighbor, and advocate for educational equity in Prince George's County. We are here tonight to defend something powerful, something transformative, transformative, excuse me. Public charter schools like Excel Academy Public Charter School, the only international baccalaureate school, and the only and the longest-standing public charter school in the county, a shining example of innovation in education. Schools like Excel are not just institutions of learning. They are incubators of brilliance. Rooted in Black and Brown communities that for generations have been underserved by the traditional system. Tonight, we find ourselves in a moment that echoes a painful chapter in our history. When we talk about defunding and closing successful public charter schools, we are witnessing a modern version of what happened to Black Wall Street. In 1921, the thriving Black community of Greenwood and Tulsa, Oklahoma, known as Black Wall Street, was decimated not because it failed, but because it succeeded. It was a beacon of Black excellence, independence, and innovation, and for that, it was burned to the ground. Charter schools like Excel are our modern-day Black Wall Streets. They are community-rooted and student-focused. They thrive because they challenge the status quo, not in spite of it. And now they are being threatened not because they are failing, but because they represent what's possible when we invest. but because they represent what's possible when we invest in our children differently. Families are choosing these unique public schools because they are delivering results, and yet we are watching a pattern of decisions that marginalizes, defunds, and destabilizes the very schools our communities have built and supported. This is not equity, this is erasure. If you allow district administrators to unfairly cut funding for schools, you are not just allowing our schools to be put on the path to closure, you are silencing a future scientist, stalling a future engineer, discouraging a future teacher, and disrupting the hopes of a family that trusted you to protect their children's potential. I urge you, ask tough questions of the district administrators who are effectively blocking enrollment to our school. Do not allow anyone to extinguish the light that our communities have worked so hard to ignite. Excel Academy and schools like it deserve not only your renewal and support, but your recognition. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jakaya Chaplin? Jakia Chaplin? Sorry if I messed up your first name. Apologies.
That's okay. All right. Excel Academy has been a blessing for my family. My child struggled with speaking, his confidence, and was extremely shy. He often second-guessed his abilities, and I worried about how he would navigate school. So I've paid close attention to what and how things were taking place. He found more than just teachers, he found encouragers and believers. Every day, he is greeted with warmth and positivity. The environment is full of life from the faculty to the staff and the children. There is a sense of joy and purpose that fills that building, you can feel it in the air, and when you walk in, you can see it. My son now comes home excited to share what he learned and how his teachers made him feel smart and capable. He's not just attending school, he's loving it. As a parent, that's everything to me. This is a child who once struggled to speak aloud, and now he will read aloud for anyone who will listen. When we received the notice of potential non-renewal, I was devastated. I felt it was premature and unfair, and it felt like sabotage. I use those terms because, because Excel just completed a school relocation, a major transition that would naturally result in a temporary decrease in enrollment. And because of that, we have already lost 84 seats. It left an impression that the school is for sure going to close, and I ask why issue such a damaging and misleading notice when the school is actively working to increase enrollment and the charter renewal process has not begun? We have a capacity for 600, and we're being capped at 460. Parents are saying that when they go in the portal, they're not even able to locate the school. So I feel very disturbed and extremely disappointed. So I ask you on behalf of my family and many others to stand with Excel Academy. Let us continue to build brighter futures together, and let's ensure the community can maintain this much-needed safe space for these children to meet great academic goals set for them that will carry them through life. Please look at the school's Facebook page, you will see posts daily, you will see what they are doing with these kids, you will see how happy these children are, learning STEM, problem-solving teamwork, you'll see them on field trips, they are engaging with these kids in an amazing way. And when you speak with the kids, I've heard plenty of them say how happy they are, how they love their teachers, they love their principal, and they are sad that the school is closing. They think the school is closing, and that is misinformation due to the premature notice, guys. And just freely speaking, Excel is a very special place. There is so much love in that school, I've never seen a school with so many happy children. And I ask you guys to look at me, you guys are fellow parents, and how would you feel if a school just moved, okay, okay?
Thank you so much.
Put yourself in my shoes, guys.
Prinsella Rather.
Good afternoon, members of Prince George's County School Board. My name is Prinsella Rather, and I stand before you today presenting the dedicated education support professionals who are the backbone of our Prince George's County Public Schools. I want you to envision a single day in a school or office who relies on the meticulous work to keep our safe and the buildings functioning, the vigilance of the security services to provide a safe and secure location, work location for all our staff and students' well-being, the expert care of our nurses, the efficient conditions of our operations managers in our front offices and in the class, in the buildings, our clerical staff, our central office who provides vital infrastructure, our central garage who keeps our vehicles running, our paraprofessionals who unlock the students' potential, food service who fuels our young minds, the transportation who ensures the safe arrival. These are not just separate functions, they are the interconnected threads of our daily reality in Prince George's County. Every student, every teacher, every administrator, every parent, and the community benefits directly from the tireless dedication of our education support professionals. We are not supplementary, we are the foundation, the pillars of Prince George's County Public Schools. Yet, there's a significant disconnect that presents, presents despite our fundamental and pervasive impacts, there is a plausible sense that management consistently undervalue and our indispensable contributions. We are engaged, we are the energy driving Prince George's County forward, often unseen and unacknowledgable. This lack of recognition has real consequences. It enroils their morale, reduces effectiveness, ultimately hindering the support of our students and the system. When dedicated professionals feel unvalued, the impact is felt everywhere. Investing in Prince George's County support staff is not just fair, it's a strategic investment in the success of our students, our schools, and our community. Thank you.
Kara Robinson.
My name is Kara Robinson, and I teach middle school math. Watching this year's negotiations and the lack of real response from PGCEA's proposals has made one thing painfully clear. This administration is willing to go to great lengths to devalue and disrespect us. I want to thank my veteran colleagues who have spoken, some of them have been here 20, 30 years, I'm finishing my eighth year, and I can say with full certainty, I will not be making it to 20. In fact, I've only mentally committed myself to two more, and to be honest, that's just because who stops on eight when 10's right there? And, but I keep my eyes open every day, because if a job pops up, it might be one day I wake up and those two years don't matter. People love to talk about millennials, I'm a millennial, mostly because they think anyone younger than them is a millennial. But let me tell you two things about us. One thing, we will leave a job. And yes, I said job. I'm over the emotional manipulation of it's a calling, we don't do it for the money. Yes, I care about my students deeply, but I also care about myself, and I want to apologize for that. I will leave an abusive situation, and that is what PGCPS has become. Two, we will do some things for some money. If you want me to do more than my job, pay me more. You can't pay me wages that make it hard for me to live where I work, ask me to do extra jobs, pile on new demands, and then disrespect me on top of it. It may have worked in the past, but the people who power through the abuse are retiring, and younger educators were not sticking around for it. You expect us to take disrespect from students, families, school leaders, and system leaders while constantly adding to our workload. We hear empty phrases like, "I know it's hard, but be mindful of," without ever receiving that same mindfulness or consideration in return. We're tasked with chasing down absences, compiling redundant data, executing half-baked initiatives just to protect the image of what's happening in our schools. When student performance, performance struggles, you won't hold the students or families accountable, you won't question your harmful policies, so who gets blamed? The teachers. Don't get me started on professional development led by people who haven't taught in over a decade, or collaborative planning, that's just another top-down meeting with no collaboration. My best PD was one I led myself, my best learning walk was one I initiated with real current teachers. I'm a professional, I hold degrees in psychology, social work, and business, I'm certified, experienced, I overextend myself because I care, I build meaningful relationships with my students and prepare them not just for school, but for life. And none of that is enough to make me stay in a system that refuses to value me in policy and practice and in pay. So let me be clear, if you want us to stay, act like it. Otherwise, the vacancies will grow, your little slush fund will grow, and teachers you desperately need will walk. Time for you to do your job. Stop the weekend because of blueprint party line. If you are not up to the job to look at the blueprint as an opportunity and not an obstacle, take it from a millennial. Quit. Thank you.
Dr. Donna Christie. Thank you, thank you. We gotta get some orders. Dr. Donna Christie.
I come for, before you tonight with a simple message. Our educators deserve more, and your negotiations team is not acting in your best interest or in the best interest of our students. We are in a recruitment and retention crisis. We are losing experienced educators and struggling to attract new ones. This district's current offer lags behind inflation while millions go unspent in salary lapses every year. Since 2011, not once has PGCPS spent its full instructional salary budget. That is not a funding problem, that is a priority problem. Let's be clear, Prince George's teachers earn less than the state average and far less than educators in Montgomery County and Washington DC. We are facing 12% attrition and growing dependence on conditionally licensed teachers. We see deep disparities in educator experience between low and high poverty schools. And we see top administrative, top administrators receiving raises, while new teachers, many with advanced degrees, take side jobs and skip meals. And still, they teach. We have educators with master's degrees on public assistance, and still, they teach. You have National Board certified teachers priced out of their own communities, and still, they teach. But if this current contract does not meet the urgency of this moment, we risk losing a generation. The district's proposal, proposed started, starting salary is not even a living wage in this county, and that fact alone is embarrassing. We are outraged. Are you? I ask you, why are we spending more on consultants than on retaining qualified educators? Why do we continue to lowball the people whose our students rely on the most? And what message does it send to the next generation we hope to recruit? How do we build a workforce for the future under these conditions? You cannot close achievement gaps if you cannot provide classrooms with fully licensed, well-supported educators. If we are serious about fully funding our schools and diversifying our workforce, giving students the education they deserve, we must make the profession economically viable. That starts with fair, competitive, and livable wages. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, but for far too many of us, it doesn't feel like appreciation. It feels like exploitation. We are holding this district up with grit and grace, but do not mistake our perseverance for passivity. Invest in educators, and you invest in students, in equity, and in the long-term health of our school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Michael Gilchrist.
Good evening, members of the board and our community. My name is Dr. Michael Gilchrist, and I'm the proud principal of Crossland High School, the southern hub of CTE, located in District Eight. I come before you not just as a principal, but as an advocate for our students, our staff, and the integrity of public education. The blueprint for Maryland's future is a visionary. Its pillars, early childhood education, high-quality and diverse teachers, college and career readiness, more resources for average students, and accountability reflect the kind of education that every child deserves. But a vision without equitable funding becomes a burden rather than a blessing. Across public schools, we are being asked to do more with less. The new funding formula, while well-intentioned, is placing significant strain on school budgets for many of our public schools. Many school districts are facing painful decisions, eliminating vital programming, cutting staff, and scaling back supports for students that they rely on every day. The very people who nurture our scholars, our professional school counselors, our teachers, and our support staff are often the first ones on the chopping block. What is most disheartening is the public school discourse, is the public discourse, excuse me. Board member, board sessions, board meetings, and county council discussions overwhelmingly spotlighting charter school cuts as the most important concerns. Are they important concerns? Absolutely. But rarely is there an equal voice raised for the cuts impacting our district schools. This creates a false narrative that only charter schools are suffering, when in truth, all public schools are suffering. That is an inequity that we cannot ignore. I urge you, do not pit our public schools against each other. Charters and public schools both serve our children. We are not in competition, we are in community. Advocacy, advocacy should not be selective. Every board member, every council member, every parent has a role to play in demanding and fair and sustainable funding for all public schools. If we continue down this path without acknowledging shared sacrifices and systemic shortfalls, the promise of the blueprint will falter. I ask you not to just support this policy, but fight for the resources to make it real for every child, every teacher, and every school, every day. Thank you.
Ms. Struthers, Kettering Middle School.
Good evening, board. My name is Lakeisha Struthers. I am the proud principal at Kettering Middle School in District Six, Prince George's County's only Spanish immersion middle school operating within a comprehensive school model. We also serve students with significant disabilities throughout CRI program. At Kettering, we educate every learner who walks through the doors of our school without a selective admissions or screening process. Despite every challenge, we've made remarkable progress. Last year, we faced a $454,000 deficit, but we met that moment with innovation, intention, and not sacrifice. We maximized our staff, aligned roles to teacher strengths, implemented efficient systems and structures. We prioritized and protected instruction with limited resources. As a result, our star rating improved, our chronic absenteeism declined, our discipline incidents dropped, and our instructional momentum grew. In short, we did more with less. But this year, however, under the new blueprint budget formula, our baseline staffing alone puts us at a deficit of over $900,000, and that's before adding new initiatives. This is not sustainable. It's not sustainable for the safety supports that our school administrators and school counselors need. It's not as sustainable for instructional supports for our intervention as paraprofessionals and team leads, or just basic discretionary funds for supplies, activities, after-school resources. We're not asking for the extras, we're asking for the essentials. Kettering is not a selective school, we, we serve all of our students. Our self-funded immersion program, they raise achievement, promote bilingual literacy, and foster cultural pride, but we're still left to serve our students with disabilities, our multilingual learners, and our community students. We do it all while competing for shared resources that are not guaranteed by this new formula. Without adequate and equitable funding, our processes, our progress is at risk, and our most vulnerable students will feel it first. I urge you tonight, equity funding formulas that reflect complex school models such as Kettering, we need those. Recognition of innovation, not punishment for being efficient or inclusive. I stand here not just a prince, as a principal, but someone who sees what, who's seen what's possible when schools are trusted and resourced. I stand here today as a district public school principal who's asking this board and the community to know that charter schools are not the only ones impacted by our current formulas. Our public schools are equally impacted. Please keep us in, us both, in your advocacy and your support. Thank you for your Thank you for your time and commitment to all of our Prince George's County Public Schools students.
Ms. Phyllis Wright.
Good evening. I have two beautiful children in Prince George's County Public School. You feel how cool it is in here? For the last three weeks, my kids has been suffering over there at William Hall Academy. Thanks to you, sir, and thanks to you, sir, that I had to reach out to you guys for those kids to get some air in that building over there where they were suffering. We had testing for the last two weeks. I don't know if they did well or not because it was so uncomfortable in there, in there for them to learn. I'm listening to all of these people in here talking about the school system. I am a proud mother, and I love Prince George's County Public Schools. My kids are doing, excuse me, my kids are doing very well in Prince George's Public Schools, and I want to keep all of us working. I am a proud mother who volunteered in William Hall Academy and in Flowers High School. Now, let's talk about security in Flowers High School. We know about the problem that we just had over there. I came before you before you gave me 12 guards, now I have six. We have 2,972 students in there. What are we going to do with six security officers over there? We need more security there. Please, give us more security for our school. Brandon, I love you, I thank you, you're doing a good job. House, I think this is the best board that we've ever had. Morris, I love you too. I have something for you all. I have boxes of chocolates that I'm selling for my kids at William Hall Academy.
There we go.
$60 a box, and we need the money over there.
We got you.
Security guard gonna bring them up there too. You said it was okay for me to do that because I believe in giving back to our children and make sure that they have. If anybody else want to donate, they can do that as well. Don't give it to me, give it to William Hall Academy because we do need the help. So, um, thank you so much for your assistance and helping us with getting that air on, but I want all of our schools to feel just like y'all feeling here. Nice and easy and grievable where these kids can learn with no problem. We don't have to wait till the 15 to turn on no air nowhere because if it's hot outside, it's got to be cool in these buildings. So let's make sure our kids are comfortable. And House, you know I love you too. You just got here, but I'm gonna make sure we keep you here for a very long time because you doing a good job. Don't worry about them people, I got you on my side.
There's 28 seconds left. We, we good, we good. We gonna take care of you afterward, afterwards. All right, thank you. Miss, uh, Mr. Brown.
Good evening. My name is David Brown. I'm the proud principal of Hillcrest Heights Elementary, which resides in District Eight. I'm coming to use it to speak in reference to student-based budgeting and this blueprint legislation. Under his current model, the blueprint legislation will negatively impact my ability to procure human capital that is necessary for Hillcrest Heights to remain successful. Through the hard work and dedication of our staff, we have grown from a two-star school to a three-star school as it relates to the Maryland Report Card. As I enter my seventh year as the principal of Hillcrest Heights Elementary, this will be the first year when I will be unable to bring back eight staff members. Those staff members include resource teachers, paraprofessionals, as well as classroom teachers, which will negatively impact our class size. The conversations that I'm preparing to have with these staff members in a, in a week will undoubtedly unpack and have a lasting impact on the 415 scholars that enter our school building each and every day. Currently, at least 100 of our scholars, roughly 20% of our school, will be impacted as it relates to the interventions that they receive in both reading and mathematics, which has truly grown our ability to perform well on MCAT benchmarks and other formative assessments that are provided within the county. Not to mention the necessary supports for our English language learners through the potential loss of, of a position within that realm as well. These staff members who I lead, um, make up, fulfill the role of after-school teachers, they are our instructional coaches, they are our instructional supports, and most importantly, they provide guidance and leadership for children. Um, the important, it's important to note that there is no substitute for human capital. Artificial intelligence, Lexia, Dreambox, and so many of those approved platforms are all successful because of the relationships that human capital, i.e. teachers, establish with children. In the event that we lose those, those stu, those educators, the inertia that we have gained over the six years of my tenure, I feel that they are in peril, and our student progress is in peril as well. It is my plea, on behalf of the countless principals, the area office, and, and all of those who support schools within Prince George's County, that we reconsider the current budgeting system and the structure that has been aligned with the idea that the decisions that we make over the next few weeks will impact the 180 instructional days that are set to take place in August. Those, those days are important for our kids' lives just for that school year and additionally for the years that remain until they exit 12th grade as, as seniors. We talked about college and career readiness and signing day. It is my fear that in the absence of the necessary funding, I will be, it will be seemingly difficult for me to do my job of preparing them for what comes next in life. I ask for your intentionality, I ask for your focus, and I ask that you put the students and the staff of Prince George's County first. Thank you.
Courtney Beveridge.
Hello. I came here tonight to bring, um, to, to your attention some concerns for safety for students walking around Pointer Ridge Elementary School. There is only one sidewalk, and it's in front of the school, but all of the other streets around don't have sidewalks. You have to cross the road, which with the drivers rushing to get their kids to school on time, it can be quite dangerous. My kid was almost hit by a car on Monday morning, and it was a very close call. He's, he's fine, thankfully, but I've seen this happen, like, too many close calls with my kids, other kids, and I just think that these concerns need to be addressed. Now, fortunately, my concerns were being, are being heard by Ms. Brown, and she passed them on to your Safe Passage Department, and I know that they are taking a look at it, you know, this week, which is very, I'm very appreciative of you guys taking my concerns seriously because I don't want any, I don't want to be addressing you guys for another reason, you know, when things can be done preventatively. Um, sorry, I'm not very good at public speaking, so I'm gonna just end it there and just, thanks for, um, being, being on it and on top of that. Thank you.
Thank you. We received 12 written public comments and one pre-recorded video, all of which have been uploaded to the board docs for viewing. Written comments will continue to be uploaded to board docs as they are received. Thank you all for the comments today. Now, the chairman recognizes Superintendent House for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair, Chair Jackson, board members. I'm, first of all, extremely proud to share this morning that I had the opportunity to really be with, um, some incredible students and incredible educators in our CTE program. They had the opportunity to unveil our 48th student-built house. And this house is actually in the Bowie community where they walk away with the critical skills that we know as we talk about pathways and entrepreneurship, gainful employment, all of these things our students walk away with. So I'm so grateful to the educators, the, the students, to really live in this moment and have the opportunity to grow as they're growing. This week also marked Teacher Appreciation Week as well as Nurses Appreciation Week, and we want each of you to, to, to sure, understand the dedication and, that the dedication that you focus on, on a daily brace, basis is appreciated. Additionally, PG CPS is engaging A&amp;M, Alvaro Esmeralda, to provide support to our finance division where workload demands have outpaced available resources, staffing, and technology have also been a major issue. As I've shared before, many of our current financial processes remain highly manual, by hand, leading to backlogs, delays, mistakes, and increased operational risk compared to other school districts. In Maryland, PG CPS operates with a notably lean finance team with staff. So it's going to be important that this, uh, this is something that we focus on for the future. You know, what I will say in reference to this, board members, that I want to just, just take a moment to speak directly to the, to the why. This investment, this investment is extremely important, and not only in reference to PG CPS, but also the future as a whole. During my time in my previous school district, I had the opportunity to work closely with A&amp;M, and I was extremely impressed with their ability to conduct deep operational and financial analysis and to do it quick. It grounded us, not just in best practices, but also what worked best for large school districts, it was their work. They do this not simply as an audit, auditing of the books, they identify the structural inefficiencies to uncover the cost savings and the opportunities that help systems like ours build long-term sustainability to without the kind of sacrifices that we see in reference to student outcomes. This isn't about sourcing or decisions about sourcing, it's about strengthening internal capacity. A&amp;M works shoulder to shoulder with district leaders, providing practical tools and insights to inform smarter budgeting, staffing, and strategic planning as a whole. I stand behind this recommendation because I've seen firsthand the value of A&amp;M and what they bring to the table. This is about building more resilience in, in terms of financial foundations, the future in our district. I'll also like to share, um, real quick, that additionally, and on May the first, we received a memo that I think has circulated across the state. And this memo was from our state superintendent, Dr. Kerry Wright. Our financial team has taken a close look at this memo alongside our CFOs and CFOs across the state of Maryland, and they're working, you know, really hard to, to understand the guidance. And now, what I will say, there are some specifics in this guidance that spell out the legacy funding, which is the way it was funded before in reference to charters. That will be adhered to, but there are other things in that guidance that still have to be worked out in reference to special education funding and other pieces. So, we're committed to taking a close look at what this looks like, but we also know that this is not a issue in reference to specifically charters, it's an issue for all schools. Lastly, there's so many amazing things that, that are happening in this district, and it's important for us to know and understand what they look like. We continue to highlight this through our quarterly reports and by, by our division's communication team. So I want to make sure that we highlight where you can find this information. You can find these highlights by visiting pgcpss.org/ q3. We do one of these at the quarter, every quarter. So there's a Q1, there's a Q2, Q3, so you can share the positive things that are going on, the amazing things that our teachers are doing, our administrators are doing. So again, www.pgcps.org/3, you can take a look at that. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Superintendent House. Now for the committee reports, the chair recognizes Dr. Anderful.
Thank you, Chair Jackson. Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Tiffany Anderful, proud to serve as the District One representative and a member of the Academic Achievement Committee. This evening, I'm honored to present a brief overview of the committee's key outcomes and focus areas for the 2024-2025 school year. Our work centered on four pivotal areas. Students with disabilities, comprehensive support and improvement, CSI schools, multilingual learners, and data review. For students with disabilities, we enhance interdepartmental collaboration through co-created goals and feedback loops. Recognizing the need for better alignment between school-based equity leads and school-wide objectives, the Department of Special Education and the Office of Equity, Diversity, and Belonging initiated joint planning to boost family engagement. Moving forward, the committee will continue emphasizing inclusive practices and recommendations to deep, to deepen school-level impact. For comprehensive support and improvement, CSI schools, the ongoing assessment project, OGAP, provided professional development to over 150 teachers with 90% reporting improved understanding of math instruction. Additionally, 24 school leaders received coaching, with 63% noting increased student achievement. Next steps include recommendations for weekly data meetings, integration, alignment of curriculum resources, and district support model. For multilingual learners, this year, 39 schools hosted family events, and 27 families participated in leadership roles. The Family English Literacy Program supported 56 families with hybrid access models proving effective. Next steps will include recommendations to expand leadership development opportunities, reinforce translation services, and scale the International Parent Leadership Consortium to more families and regions. With regard to data review, DIBL's assessments showed a 3% overall increase in early literacy benchmarks across grades K through 3, though challenges persist in areas like phonemic awareness and comprehension. Benchmark assessments indicated a five-year growth of 8% in math and 7% in reading and language arts, with notable gains in kindergarten through second grade and second, and secondary levels. We'll continue with recommendations of high-dose tutoring, provide refresher training, and offer targeted professional development to address these areas. These priorities reflect our continued commitment to advancing academic achievement and equity across the district. Chair Jackson, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Anderful. Parent, Community Advisory Council report, Board Member Walker.
Thank you so much. Good evening. As the board liaison to the Parent and Community Advisory Council, PCAC, established under Board Policy 1500, I am honored to share an exciting update. PCAC plays a vital role in connecting the Board of Education and the superintendent to the voices of our parents and our communities by providing advice on issues, policies, and programs that directly impact our scholars. This year, we received more than 116 applications. That is a powerful testament to the deep interest in our community, having shaped the future of Prince George's County Public Schools. That is absolutely the most I've seen since I've sat on this board. This, this year, we want to thank each and every person who has applied and our previous members who will be stepping off this new term. Each board member in alignment with the recommendation of the superintendent selected one representative for their district, and I'm proud to share the newest PCAC members who have been selected. For District One, we have Ms. Brianna Holmes, parent at CMIT North High School. She is a respected community leader known for her steady presence and passion for uplifting scholar voices, and she brings a calm, thoughtful approach rooted in empathy, collaboration, and a drive to grow what's working while imagining what's possible. District Two, Ms. Grisia Hureta of Riverdale Elementary. She is a proud Prince George's County native with a deep sense of service. Her calm confidence, bicultural insight, and solutions-focused mindset brings an important and inclusive lens to this table. District Three, Ms. Kamika Harris, PTO leader at Thomas S. Stone Elementary. She is a powerhouse, creative, and trusted connector. Whether leading parent engagement or planning student events, her energy and commitment to community uplift is unwavering, and we're happy to have her on board. District Six, Ms. Teresa Smith of Thomas Pooleen, is a policy-minded advocate and results-driven leader. Her recent works on bullying prevention reflects her dedication to transparency, accountability, and doing what's right, especially when it comes to her scholarly safety. District Nine, Ms. Candace Perkins, representing Frederick Douglass High School in both CMIT Elementary and Middle Schools. She is a dynamic champion for her equity. Her work spans school hallways, community rooms, and statehouse hearings. So we are excited to also recommend the following individuals for consideration. Nonprofit Representative, Mr. James Williams of the Kevin Durant Center. Business Representatives, Mr. Trevon Sukie, a local entrepreneur and videographer. On behalf of the board and the superintendent, congratulations to our new PCAC representatives, and again, thank you all who have previously served. Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Education appoint Mr. James Williams as the nonprofit representative and Mr. Trevon Sukie as the business representative to the Parent and Community Advisory Council in accordance with Policy 1500.
Without obse, without objection, um, I move that we accept the PCAC liaison, liaison, Boardman Walker's recommendation. Any objection? All right, the, um, the recommendation is adopted. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chair Jackson. Thank you, uh, board. As, as we all know, items As as we all know, items 15.1 through 15.6 require your approval. That includes 15.10 as well. I do believe 15.7, 8 and 9 have been pulled for discussion. 15.1 proclamation for observation of National Caribbean American Heritage Month. 15.2 proclamation commemorating the month of June 2025 as LBGTQ plus IA plus Pride Month in PGCPS. 15.3 PS number L16F085, High Point High School Replacement Project Approval of the Education Specifications. 15.4 Amendment Blueprint Schools Phase Two Technical Advisory Services Contract for the Design Build Phase. And 15.5 Approval of Contract of Everyday Labs Attendance Intervention Platform. And 15.6 Revised PGCPSSY 2526 Calendar Inclusion of Seniors Last Date. And finally, 15.10 Board of Education SY 2526 Calendar.
Thank you Superintendent. Board Members, would you like to pull any of the items for discussion outside of the ones that we already pulled earlier today? All right. Seeing no lights, if there's no objection, the consent agenda items 15.1 through, what's that, 15.6 and 10 will be adopted. Moving on to unfinished business, there's no unfinished business. So moving to 17.0, so we have the 15.9 that would move from the consent agenda down to the new public charter school application, Imagine Rock Creek Public Charter School. What we do know that upon the charter's request, they have withdrawn their application. So without objection, agenda item 15.9 is withdrawn. Is there any objection? 15.9 is withdrawn. Moving on to item 15.8, the rapid financial assessment and improvement support engagement. All right, who was 15? All right, Dr. Moss.
Yeah, thank you so much Chair Jackson. I did ask that we pull item 15.8. I just want to voice this, the superintendent referenced this contract opportunity as part of his initial superintendent's report. I do want to name before we vote on this item today. It is an item that I cannot support. I just want to name publicly, this is a contract in the amount of $649,000. I think this work makes a lot of sense in terms of what we need to do with finances. I don't think this is the right time. I visited a number of schools this week where our school budgets are being cut. I've got one school that has a $1.4 million budget cut. I have another school that has a $500,000 budget cut. I have two schools that have budget cuts about $350,000 each, another one with $446,000. And all of these budget cuts amount to us having to get rid of math and reading teachers. And so while I think it's important that we audit our financial systems, for me, as a board member, would be insensitive for me to vote for an item that's over six that's over half a million dollars, but at the same time where kids in District Seven are actually being left without math and reading teachers inside of their schools every day. And so while I respect the superintendent's wish to to bring this item up and this contract, I certainly think we need to shore up our financial systems and make them stronger. But given all the cuts that we have faced from the state today, this just does not feel like the right move for me. And so I wanted to voice that concern today.
Board Member Boozer Struthers.
Yeah, thank you so much Chair. I I would like to voice a different perspective about why the time is now and in my time on this board. I have watched this division struggle with out with systems that have been that have created inefficiencies and and struggles, especially as we move to this complicated blueprint funding that we have heard from our school leadership today. The potential for risk of not managing these situations at this time, I think, is is quite high in terms of loss, in terms of you, you know, equate the dollar amount. I also think the the ability to message and tell our stories to Annapolis were lost in this last budgeting cycle and can be improved through these efficiencies that are needed. We were facing an $8 billion cut in per pupil funding, and that's the impact our principals spoke about tonight, that I believe that that our voice in Annapolis will only be improved by our financial reporting, and we are under significant reporting requirements that have changed, and that's the big risk. If you cannot report on the blueprint, you get can funding can get cut. And so I think that the time is now, and I would like to voice support for this important work at this moment in time. Thank you.
Thank you Board Member Boozer Struthers. I want to recognize Board Member Walker.
Thank you so much. You know, this is a tough time also in District Nine. I think across all of our districts, we hear our teachers who consistently tell us that there are shortages. We see them, we're mothers, we're fathers. We are accountable financially to the oversight of Prince George's County Public Schools and our 132,000 scholars that we represent. With that, I say, and we know, we own 62% of the county's budget, and we have not been in a place where we can accurately, efficiently and effectively communicate by way of any chart to be able to talk to our legislators about this is what we need and as a result, we still need more. We struggle with articulating that, and part of that is because of the lack of systems that we have and quite frankly, the lack of understanding what the data and the processes are because they are extremely jumbled. My recommendation is in support of where it is that we find ourselves. We are in a financial struggle, and if our systems do not get in a place where we can understand where the gaps absolutely lay so that we can attack them strategically and reallocate that money where it needs to go, we will find ourselves back here every single time, saying the same thing time and time again. I understand my colleague and I understand that $649,000, I think it is, is extremely high. So what I recommend is that we go back to the superintendent and we say, we need this, but we also need you to negotiate this down and negotiate some things in because what this is, is a two, I'm not sure if you all read it, but it's a two-pronged, it's a two-phased approach so that then we can know where it is that we need to attack. So I am a proponent with modifications of going back and getting extremely clear, but I recognize that dollars are important and we need to be strategic, but we're always going to end up here if we don't put the resources in to get an overview of where it is we need to focus. That's my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you Board Member Brown.
Thank you so much Chair Jackson. This is a tough one because as a PGCPS parent and as a federal worker, I see it every single day when it comes to the budget. It is very hurtful to see where our county is going as far as what we are going to be allocated. We see a lot of disruptions that are going to happen. And so with that being said, I am in support of my colleague, Dr. Felton Moss, and not going forward with this because of perception. I think about our budgets even when, you know, we're at home. My recommendation for the superintendent would to give us more than one option of an opportunity to see if we can maybe see if there's three other companies or other software possibly that could do do the work because this is just too high. Just like in our home, I'm sure you all, sometimes you can't take vacations. Sometimes you can't get the brand name cereal. This is one of those moments that we're we're dealing with right now, and so this is going to be a community effort, but I cannot support a $649,000 consulting situation. However, I can support some sort of reconstruction of this budget with other options and a possible renegotiation of the price. Thank you.
Thank you Board Member Brown. I do have a com, let me see. Okay, let me get to my colleagues first. Dr., I'm sorry, Dr. And ifill.
Thank you. So with regard to this possible contract, I too, in the same vein as Board Member Brown and Board Member Moss, am unable to support this proposal as it stands. As stated actually by Board Member Walker, there is a need to have more of a justification for the rationale behind this particular proposal. What I would like to propose also is that we see additional options to consider that specifically outline, you know, what the benefits of this would be. We'd like to see additional information about other clients that this particular company has worked with. We truly need to see some evidence to justify this cost at this particular juncture, as as many of my colleagues have stated. And so until we have that additional information, I am unable to support this. Thank you.
Vice Chair Briggs.
Thank you so much Chair Jackson. I just want to, you know, I want to reiterate the message that many of you have already heard, which is that I do think that it's important that we, from both ends of the points that have been made, I think it's important that we make investments to to improve the efficiency of our finances, and so that is essential, and that's what this discussion is about, is how do we streamline processes that are across multiple departments. But also, I think the other piece here is, is there some way that we can get the cost analysis presented to the board in a in a way where we are clear to my colleague's point around having a some type of justification around options that exist. And so I think for me, I think this is one of those tight rope moments for the board where we definitely know that systems-wide, this is something that's essential to us being able to be effective in the future. But I think in the immediate term, there's this challenge of putting $600,000 towards a consultant group that we aren't 100% certain will will have a return on investment. So I think for that reason, I'm also a no vote for this, but I do think that this is essential and looking forward to hopefully the superintendent and his team bringing back a clear proposal that provides a number of options.
Board Member Goines McCann.
Thank you Chair Jackson. I echo the sentiments of, at this point, all of my colleagues. We do have a very serious issue, not only that we're facing in this upcoming school year, but what we have been told is we will be facing budget deficits and budget issues for the next several years. And so while I definitely understand the need, I am not sure how many of us watch all of our meetings, but we've definitely had some tense OBFA committee meetings about asking for things and being told that just straight up, there is not the capacity to get the information that we need. Our systems are not up to date. There are so many different things that are standing in the way of us having a fully well-run finance system and department. At the same time, a lot of those things are not reflected in this proposal, and at this point in time, it does seem extremely insensitive to say, if we can't get what we need now, then let's throw some more money at it, at the same time as our schools are literally saying, we don't have enough money to fund teachers in our classrooms, and that's what we're here for. So I also would like for us to have some other options in terms of how we can address these very real systemic budget crises without such a high price tag and also without such a broad scope that doesn't specifically address our needs now and in the future.
Thank you. Board Member Amy Olivia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to echo the comments of a lot of my fellow board members. From my short tenure here, but long tenure as a PGCPS parent, I do believe that we need some stronger systems in place to better understand our budget and to be able to tell our budget story and our financial picture. In addition to some of the questions that fellow board members have asked the superintendent to come back with, I am interested in, you know, we've seen other contracts that are sole source contracts that have a vendor justification and additional information provided to us about why this is the company versus, you know, getting multiple bids and that sort of thing, and I'd be interested in that as well for this, please.
Before we before we move to the second round, I do have a comment. I think that multiple things can be true at the same time. I I don't really think that, you know, what we're saying here on the desk is necessarily in conflict with each other, you know, at the heart of what we're trying to get at, you know, efficiency as well as accountability. But what I would like to do is see if there is some half step, and I know a couple of my colleagues mentioned a different variation, like can we come back to the table and look at different options? One of the options I was thinking is that, you know, I've done work before with with local universities, especially like historically black colleges and universities in general, and I know that this will be a great opportunity for their mathematics or finance department to get involved. Maybe we can create some type of program where we can have collegiate students come and moonlight in our finance department. That may be a low-cost alternative. Also, I'm thinking about short-term solutions as I know the President of the United States laid off, you know, thousands of federal workers, and I'm sure that there are a lot with that financial acumen that can be helpful. There may be an opportunity to leverage our federal workforce and see how they could play a part in bolstering the capacity of our financial division. Also, there may be opportunities to to leverage the consulting firm, you know, but at a different price point and also a different scope of work. And maybe they can help us with professional development, understanding our organizational structure and help us put things into place in order to, you know, have a straight pathway forward, but not at a $600,000 level. So those are just some of the ideas that I did have in regards. I think it's a great idea. I think that we have to work on the implementation of the consulting piece as a whole. So, thank you. I'll see, Dr. Moss.
Yeah, I appreciate this second opportunity to speak to this. I do want to be clear with folks that we, you know, when we look at the contract and you can see it yourself online, I want to be clear about this. Deliverables inside of the contract are essentially deliverables that will only take the hood, raise the hood and look inside of it and see actually what's happening. And that's a lot of money to make that investment. And then what also concerns me is that there will be, the report will make additional recommendations that will be technical in nature, and those technical shifts will include us buying new software. And so while this is a $649,000 investment today, it can be in excess of more than that. And I believe we need more financial systems and stronger systems, but we do have a chief financial officer who I fully expect to have a vision for the work that she does that can really outline the changes that need we need to be able to make. And I think we pay incredibly well to be able to do that work. And so I just want to lay out to the folks, I do think that we have work to do on our accounting systems in that, but at a time where our schools are taking tremendous cuts, I just want to lay that out. It's just not in our best interest to make this kind of decision around our financial and accounting systems. The final thing I want to say, while I appreciate vendors who are across the country who are doing amazing work, Prince George's County has some of the most amazing and brightest folks. This vendor does not have roots in our county. I think there's an opportunity to find strong brains who are in Prince George's who can actually do this work. And finally, when I say these comments, a contract in the amount of $649,000, I think needs to be competitively procured. It does not need to be single sourced in that nature. There's more than one individual in this country who can actually do financial work that can provide advice to the work that we do. And so, you know, I think we have a responsibility as a board to be good stewards of the tax dollars that come to this system. We have a responsibility to the young folks to make sure that they have a reading and math teacher every day, and that begins with protecting our dollars and cents. And so I just want to say, while I appreciate the superintendent's intent here to do this, I don't think the time is now. I think the time is later. And with that, I reserve the balance of my time.
Thank you, Dr. Moss. Board Member Walker.
Yes, thank you so much. I think the good news is that we're all saying the same thing differently. That's that's the good news. I'd like to make a motion to table this recommendation for the superintendent to return to the board with alternatives to solve with alternatives to solve this gap, also to deliver, is it appropriate? I think it's appropriate. Postpone? Thank you so much. A motion to, oh, I said table, thank you. A motion to, I'll give it to you too Cindy. A motion-
A motion to postpone this recommendation for the superintendent to return to this board with alternatives, a more robust deliverable ROI, and cost alternatives for other vendors for a vote.
Board Member Walker, I'd like to make an amendment to that motion. Not only all of the things that you described, but I also think that we should have, you know, like a cost-benefit analysis, but also like a historic, like almost like a resume of the consulting groups, like if, what was the status of entity before they came in? And then what was the status when they left? Some type of like comparative analysis of the work that they've done, the before and after state and how much money they saved. So it's like a cost-benefit analysis, but also just a little bit more in-depth, I think. So I don't know how I would say that in a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
If you will, I have a point of order on the motion too. Just for clarity, if you could help me out. If we postpone this item, that would, it would be anything relative to this item, which means we would have to vote on this contract if we postpone it. The motion that was made is about work that is outside of this contract. And so the question is, would we not need to fail this and then make another motion and ask the superintendent to come back with those items? So the question is, we would need to fail this item?
There was never a motion.
Hold on, hold on. Point of order. What you were saying is that, so what I will say is that, point well-taken. Just give me a second to consult with my parliamentarian. So, Dr. Moss, while your point is well-taken, parliamentarian expressed that this, under the Roberts Rule of Order, the superintendent has the latitude to explore other opportunities coupled with this contract, and we can vote on it at the end.
Just have one additional point of order, if you will, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to seek the counsel of our board attorney on that recommendation because I believe you would have to vote on this contract if it comes back, not anything new. If the superintendent proposes something new, that would be a different contract. So if the superintendent doesn't come back with this, this motion, if we postpone it, would mean we would come back with this exact contract at the next meeting. If he comes back with something different, that would not have germaneness to the topic. So if you will, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to seek counsel from our legal counsel as the board.
And then I also want to acknowledge the title of, and this was 15.8, right? So it says, "Rapid Financial Assessment and Improvement Support Engagement." And so under this title, it is very ambiguous, and it doesn't spell out A&amp;M specifically. So would that fall under, and this was the way that they were able to approach 15.8, was through the contract? So by the title of 15.8 being such an ambiguous title, and it doesn't say A&amp;M specifically, would we be able to operate in this space by him bringing other options? And I defer to Mr. Horn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The superintendent did mention the company by name, and I did see the A&amp;M mentioned in the board summary. So it is specifically about this contract and about this group. And I do think, in all due respect to Mr. Smith, Mr. Swift, I understand what he's saying, but the motion to postpone would be based on this particular contract. So if you want it expanded, then it should kill this motion and then come back with, and offer a new motion for an expansion, which can include the existing one as well. But you want to make sure you're not limiting yourself only to this particular contract.
Thank you, Mr. Horn, and thank you, Mr. Moss, for the point of order. It was well-taken. So before we move forward, I would just ask, Board Member Walker, are you comfortable with, I guess, removing your motion off the floor?
Yes, whatever we need to do.
Thank you so much.
Yes, whatever we need to do. Thank you.
All right. So are there any more comments in regard to 15.8? I see number eight. You got another comment, Walker? Okay, cool. All right, so, yeah, we're about to take a vote. The motion is to approve the 15.8 Rapid Financial Assessment and Improvement Support Engagement. That's the contract with A&amp;M. So Ms. Johnson, can we please have a roll call?
Dr. Anafu?
Nay.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
I hate to do this. Can you repeat the motion? Okay, nay, nay.
Mrs. Brown?
No.
Ms. Goins McCants?
No.
Mr. Jongo? Dr. Moss?
No.
Ms. Olivero?
No.
Ms. Walker?
No, because I'm gonna make a motion.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
There's one vote in the affirmative.
Thank you. Motion failed.
Board Member Walker?
Thank you so much. I would like to make a motion to postpone this recommendation until the next meeting for a vote when the superintendent can return to the board with...
Voted it down, so there's nothing to postpone. So this will be a brand-new motion.
Thank you so much. I did know that. Let me... My motion is for the superintendent to return to the board with alternate vendors, a clear, robust deliverables and ROI, and the comparative analysis per vendor.
Thank you. Let me make sure I got that.
Excuse me, two, I just want to add to the end. To ensure we have the four financial buckets that are within the contract, A&amp;M contract.
What's the four buckets?
Okay, so it is, the new motion is for the superintendent to return to the board with the alternate vendors, with alternative vendors and a clear, robust deliverable and comparative analysis to ensure we have the four financial buckets in the contract.
That were presented with...
That were presented.
This four.
Is there any discussion? We have discussion. Dr. Moss?
That's not, I probably left it on. My apologies.
Okay. Is that the same thing for, as a kid? Board Member McCants? So, let me read this motion one more time. So, without objection, the new motion is for the superintendent to return to the board with an alternative, with alternative vendors and a clear, robust deliverable and comparative analysis to ensure we have the four financial buckets in the contract that were presented. Is there any objection? The motion will be adopted. All right. Moving on to 15.7. And is that, that's the ASPSA contract? Any questions? I mean, any discussion? 15? Dr. Moss?
Yeah, one, I'm really excited about this. As a former principal, I am excited about this contract. But I would like for the administration to clarify, something I believe is a little bit of a misunderstanding in the public around what's happening with this contract. Many of the schools in my district believe that as a result of this contract, schools are expected to, schools are expected to, schools are expected to, are required to have an assistant principal, although they may not need one. And that is in relation, that's impacting their ability to be able to hire math and reading teachers. And so the administration, I did ask a question. The administration was able to clarify that for me. I think it's just good for the general public so that there's no misconfusion, there's no confusion here that in this contract, schools are required to hire an assistant principal, even if that means they have to get rid of reading and math teachers. So if the superintendent and his team could clarify kind of what that means as relates to this contract, I think it'll be helpful for the public.
Do you mind restating your question?
Yeah, so the question was, is there anything inside of this contract that requires every school to have an assistant principal? Even if that results in the displacement of teachers to be able to have an assistant principal?
Got it. I'd like for my Chief of Human Resources to share some insights here. Dr. Baldwin?
Good evening. Thank you for that question. The initial response is no, this is not in the contract. In regards to the actual question for FY '26, we have partnered to allocate one 12-month assistant principal position to each one of our schools. Right now, our assistant principal positions are 11 months. And so therefore, our principals stand alone for 12 months out the year. So we've worked with the Budget Office to allocate a 12-month assistant principal position that is locked, and we are providing that for them. So it is not taking away from their SBB budget.
And if a principal doesn't want an assistant principal, are they required to still have one if that means they would be cutting teachers?
So I'd like to get a little bit more information because I think we only have about 46 schools that actually do not have an assistant principal at all. And for those schools, we're actually giving them. So they're not cutting from their teachers because we're giving it to them. And then the other locations that...
Just one second, but that still would come from somewhere else in the budget? That amount would still come from somewhere else in the budget that could be teachers?
So I would have to defer to the actual Budget Office to respond to that piece of it. But did you, I don't want to break rules, am I, can I finish?
The chair.
Okay. For those schools that already have an assistant principal, those positions were actually, if they have one, that position was reassigned to a 12 so that they'll have that 12 month. And then for a school, for example, one of our high schools, if they have six assistant principals, then one of those positions would be converted to the 12. So it's not taking away, but it is actually just converting that one additional position. But I understand what you're asking, and I would have to defer to the Budget Office on the actual allocation of that.
Board Member Goins McCants?
Thank you so much, Chair. I do want to point out, even though this is not directly related, but it's related to that question. We asked specifically about what was given to principals and what the guidance was, not to you specifically, but asked of the administration. And we were told we couldn't get that, and that question could have been answered before we got here had we been given that information when we asked for it. In relationship to this specific contract, and this might be a point-of-order question, I guess, we've asked also about our role in the bargaining and how we direct things. I am not quite sure if this is the final contract, and if we vote on it tonight, that means this is what is happening? Or is there still negotiation to be had? Because we've had public comment tonight saying that this might not be an agreed-upon, a fully agreed-upon agreement. So can we get clarity on that, please?
Yes, yes. So we negotiate with four different labor partners. And so this is one of those contracts. This is for ASASP specifically. I believe the public comment you're referring to was with PGCEA. So we are in the process of negotiating that agreement, totally different process. We actually began this process, I'm gonna get it wrong, but it was a little over a year ago. And so this is now the culmination of a long negotiation where we had robust discussion on a lot of really important topics that we were very far on. But we luckily have come together and resolved it. So this is a tentative agreement that has been ratified by their membership as of this evening. And so what the board is voting on is to finalize this agreement for the dates that are designated within the document.
Thank you so much. My confusion was with our, the comments from our principals around the budget and what this said and that didn't say. But thank you so much for that clarification.
Dr. Anafu?
Thank you. So similar to what Dr. Moss just requested, I'd just like to have clarity specifically, and actually, Board Member Goins McCants just said the same thing, on what was actually communicated to our principals regarding the requirement of an assistant principal. I've personally spoken to principal who, based on what was shared with me, was that they had to have an assistant principal despite being a school that did not have one. And seeing that if they actually had an assistant principal, they would have to reduce their staff. That was what was shared with them. And if that wasn't what was shared with them, then I'm wondering, I'm wondering where is the miscommunication? Because to Board Member Moss's point, we should not be in a position where if a school has not served, has not had one for years, then now they're being required to have one. And then that means that they're losing instructional leads. They're losing media specialists. They're losing classroom teachers. That should not be the case. And so I'd like to know specifically what was communicated to principals. And if for some reason, there's some miscommunication that, you know, we're intentional about correcting that so that principals aren't left to continue to, you know, shuffle dollars even more and figure out how they're communicating, some of which they've already communicated, the need to cut staff. And if this is the reason, then we need to do our due diligence to correct that. So I would like to see that happen.
Dr. Baldwin?
I would be happy to work with the superintendent to provide you the actual written language that went out from our office so that you have it and you can see what we said. And I would also want to go back to our area office team for those specific schools. As I said, off the top of my head, I think it's about 46 that do not. But I just wanted to make sure that we understood that for those schools that do have an assistant principal, so if there's one elementary school that has one assistant principal, the 11 assistant principals are purchased by principals. So you have some schools who have chosen not to purchase an assistant principal. They've put the money in other places. But for those schools that have an assistant principal and have always had one, we are moving that position from an 11 to a 12. So it sounds like it may just be a select group. And I'd like to follow back up with the area office for that select group to have that discussion.
And I just would add, I'm not sure what communication you're talking about, but I know in the conversations with the Budget Office along with HR, when this decision was made, historically, smaller schools have never been able to afford an assistant principal. So for those who haven't had one, they haven't been able to afford one. And so this was looked at as an opportunity to give them one because it wouldn't be based on their SBB and a decision they'd have to make of, do I get an assistant principal? Or do I get a lead teacher? So that it would be given to them. So in terms of how, where the money, I don't know where the money came from. The second piece I would add to it is the importance of having an instructional leadership team, especially where we're going with the Office of Schools Support and Leadership around building our principals as instructional leaders, moving to weekly data meetings, and them having the capacity within their building that it doesn't all have to rely on them. So having another partner, like an assistant principal in those schools who could run those data meetings, be there to support and kind of share that workload of observation, feedback, coaching, and monitoring of data. So that was the intent behind it because those smaller schools normally got hit because they couldn't afford it in the past. they couldn't afford it in the past, but I...
Thank you.
In the, the iterations of the budget, right, because the budget is still not finalized, and we're still having budget meetings, and every time we're coming back, there seems, there's like different direction coming from MSD to, to us about the budget, and so there have been some shifts just over this past week.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Thank you. Board Member Walker?
Hey there, I have just a few things for consideration. The first is, Dr. Baldwin, thank you for acknowledging that this might be a small impacted population, before those impacted for the vice principals, if you could just let us know what schools those ends up being, so that we can have a heads-up within our districts in case it spans multiple districts, which it probably does, that'll be helpful with the blurb of what's happening there and with the, whatever you have communicated to the principals, because we get those calls too, and it would be great to understand that. Thank you. Secondarily is to Director Morales, you know, this is only one of many negotiations that are being communicated or negotiated, and I'm hoping that as we get to this stage here of what we're gonna vote on, if you can give the board members a one-pager with, what the major concerns were during the negotiations, as well as what was modified, streamlined for us to be, for us board members to understand what that is as well, that would be really helpful as people come to us to communicate. I think at this stage, you said it's at a, I'm not talking about the ones that's still being negotiated, I'm talking about the ones that are being ratified for vote.
We'd be glad to do so.
Is that suitable? Okay, thank you, it would be very helpful.
Number 14 is Dr. Andenfield? These lights, man.
It's probably me for the second round.
All right, did everybody have their first round that wants to go? All right, this, this board is, is acting up again. All right, then I'll go to 15, Dr. Moss?
Yeah, I just want to, I, I want to make this connection tighter. If we have 40 schools with assistant principals, and we pay all of them $100,000, that we're adding, right, we're adding 40 assistant principals, and we pay each of them $100,000, that's a $4 million impact, right, where that could actually be 40 teachers that we actually pay $100,000. So I just want to make the connection between while the district may be paying for those assistant principals out of a different pot that doesn't come from SBB, and I would be thankful, when I was a principal, I'd be happy if the district took on that responsibility. At the end of the day, that's $4 million that can't go somewhere else, that we are requiring a school principal to have an, have an AP, and that spans across multiple districts. I'm District 7, this board member's District 1, that, I mean, that, so it's, I don't think it's a miscommunication, I mean, and so I would like to hear from the superintendent, did we tell principals they had to have an, like, or, or is this in this contract? Like, how did we get here? Because it does have a $4 million impact, if it's 40 and we pay them $100,000. So did we tell principals that or not?
No. All righty.
Well, that's not, I, I, that's, that's not what our principals are communicating and what they understand. I've been in most of my schools the last two weeks, there's probably three I haven't been to, and that is the message that I've gotten.
Dr. Davis, would you mind sharing, because I know you were directly involved in reference to the communication that, that went out to administrators?
Yeah, so it was communicated that it would be a locked position, the same way nurses are, the same way councils are, so that's not a decision that they would have to make. That's what it was communicated as, a locked position. I have not heard from the area offices when I sat in those budget-level meetings, that there were principals who did not want an AP, or felt like they were trading in one for the other. That's something that we can look into, what it was messaged was like, you don't have to make this decision, like, you don't have to for a counselor or for a nurse, so I, I can look into that to see if there's some...
Thank you, and the superintendent should have one, I sent him one on Friday when I first learned about it.
Okay.
And if I may, real briefly, just to be clear, this is not in the contract, this is not negotiated language, what you're voting on today is totally separate from the issue I'm hearing.
Board Member Goins McCants?
Thank you so much for that clarification. I think to that point and several of my other colleagues' question as well, this change from 11-month APs to 12-month APs, is that all of the APs, and is that, or only locked APs? And is that in this negotiated agreement, or is that something we have decided outside of this agreement? So when it comes to positions and position descriptions and allocations, those things are not a part of the collective bargaining union. So as Mr. Morales said in my very first response, this is not a part of the union contract or what you would be approving tonight. This is a part of when we're looking at the support and supporting our principals, one of the things we did say was that they are the only 12-month administrator, and so previously, in the contract, we were actually, the last negotiations, assistant principals, we partnered with ASASP to come up with a provision that an assistant principal could come in for two weeks in July, because remember, they're 11-month employees and they do not start until August 1st, per the contract. So there were many principals who took advantage of that, because they couldn't take off in the summer, because there was nobody there to run their building. So with, I think you've heard from our principals, there's a lot going on, and for them to be the sole person that's standing there, leading that school, or you think about, I think about a Northwestern, I think about a High Point, where we're talking about 3,000 students, right, and they're the only administrator, this was one of the things where we're advocating to give them that additional support and have a one 12-month position, I know I'm gonna make it really fast. So right now, as far as the assistant principal positions, they are 11-month positions that principals have to purchase, so you do have some schools that have chosen not to purchase one. However, we are giving a locked position, which means it's something that the system is giving them, not something they have to figure out in their budget, to have one 12-month assistant principal, and then they have the option of continuing to purchase 11 months, or they can decide that they don't want to purchase anymore, so...
Got it, and I don't mean to cut you off, I know we're close, but for clarity, this contract does still allow 11-month assistant principals in Prince George's County Public Schools?
This contract does not identify contractual obligations such as that, that is something that is done at the district level.
Got it, just want to make sure that it's clear for the public, this is not, we are not saying that, okay? Got it.
Thank you. Board Member Walker?
Yeah, thank you so much. This is two different topics, and so as we do the negotiated agreement, it's not about the locked employee versus the not in the understanding of the AP. I want to move to, not the negotiated agreement, because I'm clear on that, I just want to talk about this locked piece, so you can come back, I'm not looking for you to answer it right now, please, is, when I hear locked employee, it sounds to me like you have to use it for a locked position of an AP, and I didn't understand that first. So now that I hear we're, we're saying it's a locked employee, that means that the principal can only use it for an AP. Should they desire, and if they should not, then they won't be able to use that locked position for anything else, bless you, oh my goodness, bless you. So I just want to help understanding that a little bit more, so that then we can make the best decision when it comes to discussing that. I just don't want to conflate the two, but locked position sounds very much like it's locked for this position and you can't use it for anything else.
Sure. So just to, to clarify, we do student-based budgeting, which means every year, principals are given their allocation, and they're almost in some ways, I'm gonna try to make it simple, they're given like a menu of how much a teacher would cost, how much a secretary would cost, how much your building cleaner would cost, how much an assistant principal would cost, and then when they start their student-based budgeting process, based upon their master schedule and their needs for their schools, they then decide, I'm gonna run three sections of Algebra 1, I'm gonna run two sections of Geometry, so then they decide what type of teacher that they want to purchase, so that is, that piece. There are some positions where we, at Central Office, we provide for them based upon what we know that their need is, and when we say it's locked, it means that they cannot spend that money to use it someplace else. So for example, some of our special education positions that we allocate to the school are locked positions, so we can assure that that work continues.
Okay, thank you. With the remainder of my time, I'd love to be able to converse about which positions are locked and which are not, so special education, absolutely, and hands down, potentially a VP might not be, but I would love to be educated on that, on why that might be one that we say has to be locked, especially when it can be a principal's choice as to determine what the need is in the school. That's it, thank you.
Okay, can I answer?
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay, we would, I would have to get...
No, it's okay, because you're gonna run out of time.
No, I would have to say, we can get back to you on what positions are locked and what are not, for example, Dr. Davis reminded me, nurses are locked, so there are a list of positions that are locked that you cannot, and just to make it very clear, for the assistant principal, currently, they, the 11-month positions are not locked, so an assistant principal can have one, I mean, a principal can have one, they can purchase it, they can purchase as many as they want, it's in their budget. This one position is a locked 12-month position that we are providing, so they could not take that money and then decide, oh, I'm gonna use it someplace else, because it's not a, it's not for their, their choice.
Ms. Brown? Board Member Brown, excuse me?
Yes, Chair Jackson, my question was answered, thank you.
Are there, are there any more questions? Because my board is not working. Good? All righty, so the motion is the approval of the new negotiated agreements of the Prince George's County Board of Education and the Association of Supervisory and Administrative School Personnel, ASASP, Unit 2 and Unit 3, members for the period of July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2028, with the exception of, exception that Article 6.01 bonus applies to FY25. If there is no objection? I'm sorry, we need to do a roll call vote. Ms. Johnson, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Andenfield?
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Struthers?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Mrs. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Goins McCants?
Aye.
Dr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Olivero?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
There are nine.
The motion is adopted. Moving on to new business? Is there any new business? No new business? Okay, we want to thank everyone for joining us tonight, tonight's meeting, to our online viewers, thank you for watching, there being no further business, the time is now 9:11, and the May 8th, 2025 Prince George's County Board of Education meeting is adjourned. 9:11.